Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for October 8, 2025. Look around, I see that everyone is present, so we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up for the pledges of allegiance and followed by a short invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On my behalf, Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Councilman Robinson, please.
Would you bow your heads and join me for a word of prayer? Oh, God, our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with humble hearts and gratitude. We thank you for being the God of love who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us, you never forsake us. Father, thank you tonight for our wonderful public servants and for the opportunity to serve our citizens. We ask, Father, that you protect all of our public safety personnel, police, fire, all of our military. Father, please guide our leaders tonight as we deliberate over the business of the city. Bless the United States of America. We ask these things in your name and in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, we're going to move on to item number five. Citizens' forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to approach the podium and give their name and address before sharing their comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Nope. Okay, no speakers. We're going to move on to item number six then. Presentation regarding officer promotions. Chief.
I don't have my speaker anymore for me. Eric, can you step up here, please? Let me step this up. What's that?
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my honor to introduce our department's newly promoted Sergeant Eric Bauer. Sergeant Bauer has been with the department for nine years and has shown exceptional dedication and initiative throughout his service. In his position as patrol officer, Sergeant Bauer showed leadership, consistency while serving the community and supporting his fellow officers. As a new sergeant, Bauer will be stepping into a key leadership role, responsible for supervising patrol officers and guiding our department's ongoing commitment to the public safety and the community trust. We are proud to recognize this promotion, and I invite you to join me in congratulating Sergeant Bauer on this important milestone.
Sergeant Bauer. Troy, have you come around?
Sergeant Bauer. Can you come and shake these councilman's hand?
We want to shake your hand.
Congratulations.
He loves the attention, by the way. Ms. Pollan.
So, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our newly promoted Lieutenant Courtney Pollan. Lieutenant Pollan has been a dedicated member to our police department for 13 years, most recently serving as a police sergeant. Throughout her career, she has consistently demonstrated strong leadership, integrity, and deep commitment to the public safety and community service. In her new role, Lieutenant Pollan will be taking on a great responsibility in supervising operations, monitoring officers and sergeants, and supporting the department's mission to serve and protect with professionalism. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Pollan on this well-deserved promotion.
Let me say Courtney gave the most entertaining ride-alongs I ever had.
Congratulations to both of you. You are great assets to our city. We hope to keep it that way.
If the newly promoted officers want to go out into the lobby and y'all can take pictures with your family. Thank y'all for coming.
All right. We're going to move on to item number seven. Discussion and possible action regarding purchases from the equipment replacement fund.
Mayor and Council, do you see an agenda pack? This is an item that's a pre-routine item that we do. Due to the restrictive nature of the equipment placement fund, I do have to have council approval for expenditures out of that fund. Since we do have multiple vacancies within the police department to avoid having to bring this back every time we hire someone, I wanted to make an open-ended P.O. purchase order basically for vests in this agenda item. If you approve it, we'd allow for up to five vests based on hiring times. I put kind of just a range in there. If it does exceed, we will bring it back, but this is just kind of just items to bring back individual saves in the long run.
All right.
Own their body armor for police department. Yes.
One question on the body armor was, it says it replaces two separate vests. Can you tell us?
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, so.
So, previously, we had your heavy armor or your active shooter vest. It was in the back of the patrol cars, and then you had your regular duty soft plate that they wore on a regular basis. So, this combines both of them, and they wear that with them all the time. So, it is rated up to 308 rifle caliber, and they have that on them at all times, so they don't have to go to the back. It's just so much more efficient.
Safety and response time.
An upgrade.
What's the weight like then in comparison?
They're about 30 pounds, 25, 30 pounds, depending on the size of the officer.
I believe it was a couple of years ago, we switched to the angel armor from the two vests option.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
And like the heavy vests were, how much did those ones weigh?
How much did they, I'm sorry.
How much did they weigh? I'm just more curious than anything else.
So, they, the heavy vests probably weighed roughly about 20 to 25 pounds.
Okay.
So, it's probably additional.
So, this has way more.
It has more weight, however, because of how it is, it distributes the weight better. It's a better way of carrying it on the chest. It carries it across the abdomen and not the shoulders, so.
Just curious.
Can I get a motion?
I shall move.
Second. You have a motion to approve the purchase by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion?
Just curious, how much do these things cost?
Usually around 2,200 vests.
So, will this open, give you enough, you think?
Yeah, I rounded it up so that, I looked at historical for the past year, and it varies just based on the time of the year, and it should be fine.
I have to say that this is refreshing to see that we're buying in anticipation of new police officers. It's good to hear, contrary to what we've been hearing the last six months or so. It sounds really good. All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution to nominate candidates for the Board of Directors of Montgomery Central Appraisal District.
Mayor and Council, it's at a time again where the Montgomery Central Appraisal District, or MCAD, has two open positions. The council has the option to appoint two candidates. You don't have to, but you have that option to make any appointments. And just as a reminder, the city, as a taxing entity, gets four votes for the entire MCAD appraisal district.
And like I always remind everybody, how many votes does the school district have?
I've forgotten. It was several thousand.
More than four.
I want to say it was like 1,200, something like that. Yeah, okay. So, our nominee probably need not worry about getting elected.
I'll entertain a motion to nominate someone.
I'll nominate Joe Summerlin. He's the new guy.
Yeah, I second that.
That's great.
We have a motion to nominate Councilman Summerlin as the new guy to fill one of the positions. We don't need to fill them both, just one.
Right.
Or none if we.
That's right. Correct, zero to two, no more than two though.
Don't have to do it.
That was by Councilman Remy. Seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You could say no.
No.
The motion carries four to one. All right, city administrator updates.
I just have one. Just an update. We had our first collection day with Republic Services under the new contract yesterday, and I can tell you, I drove through the city. That kind of reminded me of my patrol days, because I drove almost every street in the city, just to get an idea of whether the message was relayed to residents, and I saw a lot of Xs on trash cans, very clearly labeled. It looks like it was well-received. There have been a few still that have called in, and we've just handled those on a case-by-case basis, but it looks like the initial push was successful, although it did have its speed bumps, but we're working through those. Also, I've asked Republic Services to give an update at the next council meeting and to answer any questions that you may have or maybe you've heard from other residents. So, they'll be here on the 22nd to provide an update.
We also had a very successful night out on Monday.
Yes, National Police Night Out. Absolutely, very well attended. It was a little hot. It got a little too well attended by mosquitoes at the end, in my opinion, but it was good to see everybody out there. Police Department did a fantastic job. A lot of fun things to do, good food, good company. I think it was very well received by the residents.
Yes, indeed. All right, thank you. Item ten, council inquiry.
Pass.
Pass. Wow, we're moving along here.
Must be a lot of Philly fans in here tonight.
Just one.
We're going to move on to our executive session. City Council will recess the regular meeting and go into closed executive session at 6:15 P.M. According to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes annotated in accordance with the authority contained in the Texas Government Code as follows. Texas Government Code 551.074, Personnel Matters, City Administrator. Code as follows, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel matters, city administrator. I'll entertain a motion. Mayor, I make a motion to agreement, to enter an agreement, settlement agreement with Kathy Ryer. Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the agreement with Kathy Ryer by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Bratt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Four to one. I want to need a second motion.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Joseph Peart as interim city administrator with the authorities necessary for purchasing contracts, etc.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Joseph Peart as interim city administrator by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Summerlin. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Having nothing more left on the agenda, we're going to adjourn the city council meeting at 6:32.